Our meeting will be next Monday night on the 28th, 7 o'clock, over at the courthouse. We think they've got the floor done up over there that we're going to be able to use that rear exit to be over there. Also, our meeting tomorrow night that we have with the fire sprinkler demonstration, that program, the meeting will be at the courthouse. I'm not sure whether we're going to still have a demonstration out here or over there around the courthouse somewhere, we'll decide that tomorrow when they get here with the trailer. But they plan to be over there at 6 o'clock tomorrow night upstairs in the courtroom. Mr. Walsh, have you down for any indication?
Yes, sir.
Pledge, Mr. Buckmaster, Ms. Riegel will call her role. Two or three minutes announcements, like I said, the fire demonstrations tomorrow night, please try to come to that. And I think you'll find it enlightening and hopefully entertaining, I guess, a little Any other announcements, anything under announcements? Okay. Any amendments to the agenda? I know we had two budget amendments that came in late from the school system that we're going to try to get on here that was covered in budget finance committee meeting last hour. They are 2021-140101 and 2021-1402. One is an unemployment refund that has to be allocated for $1,109. And the second 102 was the Jim Satterfield Middle School Ruth Project, the bond issue and allocating that to Illinois so that they can start paying out money on that. We can cover that a little bit more later if there's questions about it. But we will need to add those to the agenda and we'll try to have you an updated agenda Monday night reflecting those. Any other additions to the agenda, Mayor, you know, anything?
Not at this time of day, sir.
We'll ask any citizens that would like to speak to the commission on any other matters that are on the agenda, so please sign in and we can call on them at the proper time. And we'll have our county mayor support. Mayor, do you want to go over that tonight?
Yeah, I'll try to debrief on it. I'm going to talk about the 2020 multimodal grant project we're going to submit, looking to submit as sidewalks from the end of the streetscape project up to the McMurray Boulevard-Broadway intersection. We did get accepted into the application round, so we're through the Melson tent into the application and we're working with our rural planning organization to try to get the application information together. The 2020 local parks and recreation fund grant has opened up. It has a very short time to look at it. I only did the training on it a little bit at the end of August, early September, and you've got to have your pre-application in by October 8th. So we have asked, I have asked for Parks and Recreation Committee to meet on that and they are meeting this Thursday at 6 o'clock. I handed out a little bit earlier, just some preliminary guidance for Halloween. I've actually had a couple of people already ask me about that. I am going to follow up with the health department to see if there's anything else they would recommend. I'm not going to cancel Halloween. I think looking at the COVID and the transmission rate, the chances of transmission are very low, especially when you're outdoors. I think as long as people follow some of the guidelines that the CDC's already set out, I think it'll be okay. Neither the state or the CDC have issued any guidance specifically for Halloween. I found this from a group that's kind of doing, trying to do something nationwide to put out some little suggestions nationwide. But like I said, I will follow up with the health department and see if they got any input on that. I would not recommend any Halloween parties that are indoors right now. Try to keep everything indoors, the traditional door-to-door trick-or-treating. Courthouse update, they have the dehumidifiers in there trying to drive the area up and get that done. That was going through the end of last week, I believe, that kind of little tent-looking thing they had in the back, one of the dehumidifiers, I believe those have been moved. I'm actually going to go over after the county commission work session tonight and go and look at it again, hopefully we'll be able to start using the courthouse. They are going to have to replace some monolium, but I'm not sure how that's going to go since I don't know if we're going to be able to find the exact match, so we'll have to see what we can do on that. The community Thanksgiving this year, the change of commerce, that is not going to happen in its traditional format. There's not going to be any community meal at the high school. What they're looking to do is deliver meals to people who can't get out of their homes and first responders, so they'll be working with the volunteer fire department and other people to try to get those meals out. So that will say it will not be like the traditional meal this year. The Northern Middle Tennessee Workforce Development Board, they did send me some information on some grants that have become available. They call it Community Cares Act funds, grants. One of them is for small businesses that may have had some expenses due to COVID-19. And the second one are for people who maybe need some additional training or education that are adults. And this grant will pay for them to get personal computers or laptops so they can connect and get that training and everything at their home. Both of those are through the Northern Middle Tennessee Workforce Development Board. I did share that information on Facebook. I will try to get that on the county's website, link into where this information can be found through Workforce Essentials. It's what's called the fiduciary agent, so they actually operate the day-to-day operations for the Workforce Development Board. That's who sent me the information, and we'll link to that so people can make the fill out those applications. That's really the major issues I've got. Is there any other issues you want me to address? Got any questions on these?
Do we have any of you COVID-19 cases?
We've had six in the last few days. However, the state changed how they calculated our numbers and you actually saw from one day to the next, like 33 active case dropped. One of their explanations was that some of the people maybe got tested in Trazado County but they actually lived somewhere else. So there was some issue there with getting their zip codes correct. So we did see a significant drop in our numbers right now. I think earlier today we were at, I think, 15 or 19 active cases. So we are seeing obviously decrease of that. You put 15, 16 active cases with, if you include the present population, 11,243 people, that's very low as far as community spread. So we're actually one of the best counties in the state. And there for a little while, we were the only county in the state where visitation was allowed into long-range care facilities. So we're doing very well, I think, on the COVID side of things. We're seeing very little community spread, so I'm really happy with how that's gone. Yes, sir.
Question. You talk about sidewalks from Main Street to 25 and getting a grant for that. Why do you can't you get a grant on the same one for the life, for the safety of the people cost? You know, you know, put the button, put the light on, green, that's what I'm doing there. I was wondering why you can't get it on this grant.
Well, it could be included in the grant. That's just around the sidewalks. There's other things that have to be part of it as well.
Okay.
So that's just part of it.
Mind answering that question a little bit? Typically, those are based on the traffic count, how much traffic is at that intersection. And if it's multi-lane intersections, typically they always have them. But where you've got just one lane or a two-lane road passing each other in, say, a downtown setting, they're not typically put in there. But I would say if that main intersection is top, they probably would be on the engineer.
Part of the grant is actually going to be hiring the engineering firm to come in and do it. This is, the county will only have to pay 5% of the project cost. It's 95% carried by the state. So right now, we're just in those initial phases of having to hire the engineering firm. We're trying to get the application in. And as we go, if we get the grant, once we go through the grant, start putting it in place, the engineering firm will be retained and that's when we'll work through all those issues. That intersection up at McMurray and Broadway is currently scheduled to go to bid in the fall of next year to approve that, so it's going to have turning lanes oddly east and north sides. People have turning lanes in all four directions with turning arrows and whatnot. So there'll be a real improvement, real improvement to that section and that'll be taken into account when this is being planned out because this project timeline-wise will probably take pace, go to construction after that's already done.
Since it's a major thoroughfare, will that be on just one side or both sides?
They're going to come in and that bluff that's kind of on the north side of that west mountain, or the east and west there, they're going to kind of take that out a little bit, put in a turning lane, there'll be a turning arrow, and then also another turning lane on Old Hallowtown Road. So they're going to add the two turning lanes to the sides that don't have them currently. So it is going to expand that intersection, put in the turning arrows and everything to try to improve the traffic flow through there.
Come on, is the sidewalk going to be on the right-hand side going that way or is it going to be on both sides?
Well, the engineering firm will have to look at it because right now, as you know, as you get a little bit up, if you go past the good year, you start going up the hill, it gets real tight through there. So again, if we go through the planning process of that, that's when those decisions will be made. And it will have to go, I mean, it will have to go in front of the planning commission to work out all these things as well.
You probably won't do theirs, they can't go up and down doing that.
Well, they probably won't be doing that once the sidewalks come through. But that's, especially on that side of the road, that's where I'm seeing a lot of people are walking up that side of the road, going to Dollar General, going to Subway, those kind of things. So I definitely want them on that side of the road. And there's also one gentleman that's in a power wheelchair that he has to wait at the end of the administration building for the traffic to get done so he can go. So hopefully that'll address that issue as well. That's the big thing. They really want you to be able to connect residential areas with commercial areas, so that's one of the big things that helps. It also helps that it's completely on a highway. So if your project is completely on a highway, it scores a little bit better than you're off of it because you could have a project that's within a quarter of a mile of a highway and submit that, but it won't score as well as if it's on a highway.
Any other questions for the mayor? Thank you. Okay, move into our committee reports. I'm just going to list the committees that we know that have met. If I miss any, please tell me. Steering committee met September 1st, budget finance met tonight, code and zoning enforcement met September 15th, emergency services met September 3rd and September 17th, law enforcement committee met September 8th, parks and rec will meet September 24th. Were there any other committee meetings? Any other committee meetings? Okay, we will cover those next Monday night as far as reports from those chairmen. Moving into our active business, first item of business we have is to elect our commission chairman. As you know, we do this every year annually. We will call for nominations and motion to elect, go into an election if we have several names. If not, we can have a motion to close nominations and elect by acclamation. We'll do the commission chair first, then we'll do the chair pro temp. Same situation there, we have more than one person nominated. We will do ballots and decide who we want to fill up slots. I would be glad to serve another year if needed. Somebody else, or y'all think somebody else can do a better job, that's okay too. Mr. Ferguson is our pro temp. Are you satisfied with serving yet, Pat? So y'all have a week to decide what you want to do, okay? We have several appointments for this month. Another appointment by judicial commissioner. Judge Lindell has sent forward a name, Lisa Scruggs, her judicial commissioner. I think we'll try to make sure that she's here in case some of you not know her. I think everybody pretty well knows Lisa. She works up at Ronnie's Amco, or I guess it's Ronnie's mare now, and Richard Clary is daughter in the community for a long time and she, I think, has the time and background and knowledge to handle this. That was who Judge Lindell has recommended. We also have two seats on the board of equalization. I believe these are both two-year terms?
Mr. Chairman, it's actually going to be the entire board is up for reappointment.
Okay.
So yes, then they're all two-year terms.
Okay, so there will be, the two new ones we have listed here would be Linda Carey and Shelby Lee. These were put forward by our new property assessor, Mr. Fox. One is replacing his seat on the board of equalization. The other one, Ms. Lisa King, had resigned a few months back and we had been asked to delay that appointment until after the election. So that's why we have those two. The other three members that are on the equalization board currently, you're going to have to help me with this.
It's Eric Holner, Lloyd Butts, Mark Abatoni.
Yes. So we will be reappointing those three to two-year term and these two new people. Any questions on that? Any concerns? Also, the industrial development board, we had Mr. Quinn Haynes' term expire. He did not want permission to be reappointed to that board and the mayor has put forward Mr. Seth Thurman as member on that board. Are there any other appointments, Mayor?
Not this month, but you'll see more coming in in November as we try to do them before the end of the year.
Any questions about those? Mr. Walsh, did you have a question?
Just about the board of equalization, two things. Always actually, is there a primary function? Is there any way to give, where you stagger the two-year terms?
I think it's set by statute, so we can't, we, it's set by statute, so the terms are what it is. The board of equalization meets, they are the appeal board for you appealing your property valuation. So when you get your tax notice, if you think your property's overvalued, you would go to them and try to get that changed. They meet three days, possibly three days a year if there's enough business to require that. I think this year, they asked them to make two days. They didn't really have anybody, as far as I know, they didn't have anybody come in front of them this year.
By statute, they have to meet the first week of June. They can meet up to three days, but it's always in the first week of June. Day varies, but it's always the first week of June.
And the statute says the two years.
Yes.
No way to stagger them, so you might have five new people that get appointed.
I think several of these people have served many, many years. I know Mr. Butts, I was on this board 20 years ago and he was there then. So, you know, it's not, not one that you typically have a lot, large turnover on, because they only meet once a year for a couple of days a year. It's an important position and, but it's, it's just a once-a-year. They do, they are required to take training now. They have a certain amount of hours that they have to do, state training to be qualified to hold that position. I'm not sure what the hours are, I forget right now. I think it's, I think it's 12 hours in a year or something to that big. Mr. Clary, do you have questions?
I'll just go ahead and ask about the training.
They are required, I just don't know the details, but I apologize for that. All right, we'll move into resolutions. First resolution, 2020-2695. This is adding Hickory Ridge Lane, which is on the county road list. This will be adding it to county's maintained road. They have met all the requirements and satisfied all the requirement to the highway department for us to take this over as a maintained road. The other one is Acorn Trail, it's also in Hickory Ridge and same thing there. It is accepting it as a maintained road and these come forward from the highway department. Any questions about those? A lot of times we add names of roads to our list, but this is actually adding things as maintained roads. We probably will have some road names to add to the list next month possibly. I know there's at least three coming before the 911 board, we may meet the first about October. Just don't want us to be confused between a road name and a road maintained. Next is resolution 2020-22697. This is resolution naming our committees. I had no request from anyone to change their, what committees they were assigned to. This list, we did pick up the wrong copy that's in your package. We'll have the correct one for you next month. There was, like in communications, this is Craig Morland. It was actually changed to DJ Lindell. And I think there may have been one other correction there, but we'll have you the correct, correct list there then. If anybody sees, committee chairman, look over your committees and make sure that we have all the people that are currently on them. We only indicated who the chairman is. You will be, need to, once this is approved, as committees, you will need to meet sometime prior to the end of this year to select your chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. And once you do that, once you meet and do that, please notify me so that we can get the website updated and our list updated. Certainly, you can keep the same chairs as you have, but it needs to be reflected in the minutes of your meeting as to who you, who you elected. Any questions about that? Moving into ordinances. First one is the rezoning. This is orders 203-2020-18, partial 020.02 on tax map 018. This property is currently zone C2. They're requesting to zone it to A1. This property, if you remember, had come before us a few months back when the request was to change it to C1 commercial, which is our downtown commercial district, caused quite a bit of confusion and we did not rezonate, so we didn't feel like that was part of our downtown. So they, we suggested that they either come back with a request for residential or one zoning or an agricultural zoning A1, since all of the property behind it, it abuts an A1 tract, decided to go with A1 request for zoning on it. The property, as you're going down Highway 25, you know where the big cell phone tower is. It's the property that that cell phone tower is at the rear of. So this request is to change it from this C2 to A1 so they can build residential home on it. Any questions about that? Sam, you need to interject anything?
No, somebody had a question about it.
The board, we didn't ask it all without.
Oh, I meant to mention that, I'm sorry. This, we will have two readings on this in a public hearing. The planning commission did not make a recommendation on this, one way or the other. They, they said send it forward to us at their request, but they did not make a recommendation one way or the other. Their decision, their desire was to leave it up to the commission. Can you explain why? Sam, can you explain why?
It wasn't explained to me. They just said they weren't going to put a, a decision upon it, they were going to forward on without a decision and leave it up to the other side.
I think because of the other way it was done, about the C1 and then the turn, I don't know, he just, nobody wanted to bring it forward. Nobody voted to do anything with it, so.
Who's our representative from GNRC? Aren't they supposed to look at these and give us a recommendation?
They did.
And what'd they say?
Can't remember what she said. She recommended, I think, but nobody voted to, had, to vote on it at all, but we said no, to the commission. But she did give a recommendation, but I don't remember right off the bat what it was.
There was no issue.
I don't have to write down, no.
She didn't oppose any issue, but her recommendation. So.
You don't know what it was, though? I mean.
It's her recommendation, it's about five pages long. She tells you everything about the property, all the properties around it, major thoroughfares, she explains all that stuff, and then she just will tell you, is there an issue with it or not? And in this case, there's no issues. It's made its body in the side.
So she didn't say, you know, leave it?
She normally doesn't say, do it or don't do it. She will explain the situation and she'll tell you if there's an issue. And then you have to decide, is the issue bad enough to say that?
The issue we have is a lot of your main thoroughfares have a commercial zoning on undeveloped property. It's, this is actually a step backwards in that the property would be worth more supposedly, this commercial property than it would be residential agricultural property. The reason in commercial, you do not allow residential development in a commercial zone. In times past, we have allowed that. Shouldn't have allowed it, but we did allow it. So we're trying not to allow it and if it needs to be changed to another zone, to allow residential development. There's residential houses on each side of this property, so it's not out of line or out of place to see that this property would want to be used for residential development, particularly that far out town. Sam?
My personal opinion, and I share this with anybody that's asked, and everything from Lincoln Ship Auto back towards town, my personal opinion needs to stay commercial for extension. Everything past Lincoln Ship Auto, you start going up the hill, there's slopes. This particular lot is on a steep slope. It would be better for residential property than it would commercial property. Taking that into account, there's also about four or five other homes already there, so all those lots really should be rezoned because they don't match their use. So this lot is right in the middle. So eventually, the way banks are changing their rules, they're not allowing people to sell their homes unless the zoning matches the use.
Some point in time, when they come up and want to settle those homes, if they are going to settle, we'll have to rezonate, so, because we've allowed them to build it.
So my opinion is, we draw a line at Lincoln Ship Auto and say no more, but everything past that, go ahead and rezonate.
But we typically do not rezonate unless they have a request by the property owner to rezonate. Mr. Ford?
The ones that's living there now in the homes, are they paying a commercial rate or?
No, that doesn't do with your taxation.
Your taxation.
Taxation strictly based on use. Now, if it's undeveloped commercial lot.
Right.
You could pay higher taxes on commercial property possibly than on a residential lot the same size.
I don't know about that.
Question I have, if you've got residential on both sides, they're commercial, how did that one particular lot became a commercial?
It's not that one lot. All those other lots in those dotted lines you see there on both sides of the road are commercial.
It's commercial all the way down the line, technically.
That, that's when we did the zoning maps, they looked at the main thoroughfares and they put commercial property on the main thoroughfares. You have to have a place for everything. And this, if there was going to be development, commercial development, it may sense that it's going to go out Highway 25, which is your busiest road in the county, that direction. So that's why it was drawn that way. Okay? But I think this is a, in my opinion, this is a reasonable request. It could have, it would have been a reasonable request to take it R1 if they wanted to. A1 seemed to match more because you're not having spot zoning there. You're attaching it to a larger A1 zone. Or if you went ahead and did it to R1, it's sitting out there as an island on the hood zone. The restrictions are basically the same. Ms. Johnson?
The way the land lays is kind of more feasible for residential than commercial.
Right.
Because it's on such a.
It's a, it's a pretty good slope, it's going to be, pretty hard to build a house there. I mean, it's already got a cell phone tower at the back, so you're not even looking at the back portion of the property to be able to develop at all. The front part of it would be suitable for a small home, I'm sure. And that's what they're trying to do, what they're wanting to do. Typically, if we have a request from a property owner to rezonate property, unless we have a really good reason not to do it, we typically go with it, but. But y'all make that decision. If that's up for our decision, we'll have a first reading, a second reading, and a, you know, a public hearing, that is, if it passes first reading. Any other questions, Ms. Johnson?
I was gonna say, well, he owns the property.
Or?
He owns the property.
Yes.
So he wants to build his house.
And then they're wanting to build a house?
He should be able to build his house.
He can't. With it's up to the person, I can't allow him to do it.
That's why we'll try and change it. Any other questions about it? If you have more questions about it or something comes up, go out there, take a look at it, talk to Sam about it, I'm sure he would welcome any of your questions. Next one's ordinance two oh four twenty twenty nineteen. This is rezoning. From I one to R one, there was a large tract of land out by the river at the end of Cemetery and Harrod Lane, all that area back in there, that shows on the map says I one industrial. I think it was set aside at one time for possible development as an industrial park that never did happen. There's several small tracts of land that evidently at one point in time were sold, developed, and therein, we could not find where this had ever been rezoned, the zoning had been changed, but for this to have ever been developed and sold, it probably would have happened, but we can't find it. What's happening on this issue, once again, the zoning doesn't match the use, they want to sell the property, and we're trying to get it to match so they can sell the property.
So in this particular case, just to explain, this doesn't explain the others. Let me know, next month, we should have another one coming through, and eventually, we should get all, one, two, three, four, eight lots rezoned right there. Last year, we rezoned a lot behind it, agriculture, because of size of it. The bank wasn't letting us get a home loan so he could build his house because it wasn't zoned properly. Well, if these people turn around and try to sell their properties, it's gonna be the same situation, but in this particular case, he wants to build something. Well, it's in an industrial zone, and instead of just going out there letting him build, I follow the rules, and the rules say that he doesn't have the room to build. So with him rezoning to what it should be, he will have the room to build.
Where is this area?
Do you know where Harrod Lane is? Do you know where Cemetery is? Go out River Street. Go out River Street to the top of the hill, and you turn left by the old Cemetery. You go down that road, and Mr. Gregory Pot is on the right, you turn left, goes over to the old Harrod House and down to Dr. Miller's farm where Dr. Miller lives. It's at the top of that hill, right there, behind the old Harrod House, where these are. And there again, we can't just come in and change the zoning on someone's property unless they request it. In this case, they request it.
I'm trying to fix a lot of issues. I would have done it already if I could. I have to convince them that it's in their best interest to fix their situation before they do turn it up. In this particular case, he needs to rezonate.
Any other questions about it? This one was recommended by the planning commission at their meeting two weeks ago. There again, we'll have our first reading, public hearing, and second reading on this one. Any other questions about it? Next is an ordinance, two oh five twenty twenty dash twenty. This is an order of ordinance to update our building codes to the twenty eighteen edition. Currently, we're on the two thousand nine and the two thousand twelve, depending on which one. This is to adopt the twenty eighteen edition. This is required by the state of Tennessee, we have to be within five years of a current co-edition. It's time for that cycle. We had delayed doing this until the state made a decision on what they were adopting and which, that they were gonna do statewide. Us being exempt jurisdiction, we can, we have to be at least as strict as the state. We can be more strict, or we could adopt a more current, we could actually adopt twenty twenty one, but we're trying to mirror what the state is doing. All of these are your miscellaneous code, this is your main building code, which we call the commercial code, but it's your main building code. It covers all buildings except residential, single family, duplex, and townhomes. This would, this would be a building for like this building, or your new jail, or a seven eleven, or a high rise. That is all reflected in the building code. These minor codes, we call them the fuel gas code, mechanical code, plumbing code, property maintenance fire code, existing building code, energy conservation code. We have those adopted now, they are in effect now. This is simply updating it to a later addition of the code. This was, went over at length by the codes and zoning committee, and it was recommended that we go ahead and go with these. We're maintaining the energy requirements on the two thousand nine code, because the eighteen is quite a bit stricter, the state is allowing us to do that as long as they do it. If they update to a further addition, then we would have to as well. But right now, they're still maintaining the two thousand nine on the energy conservation codes, so we're going to do that as well, particularly on residential. That's about the only thing, that's what a lot of this, where it's talking about the testing and replacing and all of that has to do with energy conservation code. We pulled out the residential code, because it is a separate code, we'll have a separate ordinance on it that we'll bring at future meeting. There's no reason for us not to go ahead and adopt these, get these in place, and get the paperwork started on them, so that we can let the state know that we're on the new edition. It will take effect ninety days from the first adoption, I'm sorry, ninety days after the second reading. And so you'll have a little bit of time for the contractors to know things are gonna change. Anything that was permitted prior to this change, we'll say on the code it was permitted under, only the new construction that would be started after these are adopted is what this would apply to. Any questions on this? Number one, we're required to do it by state, this is everything we have now, just a later addition. Any questions?
So are there any major changes on this? Any kind of differences that you want to talk about?
On the.
We're bringing up.
Well, we're bringing up, like, residential, there's some changes. There's not really any changes up here, there might be a few inch differences on spans and adopting new things that exist now that didn't exist, but nothing's really changing. We're just stepping up to the newer version, trying to stay current.
You have typically changes where they will change wording. They have things that.
They have chapters around.
You know, they move things within chapters to try to make it a little bit easier to find and understand. As far as from the twelve to the eighteen, there weren't any major, major ah-ha things. I've got an actual book on the changes, and they were, they were minor spans, for one thing, because the wood we're getting now is just not the same quality that it was in years past. So what they're allowing as far as the span on a particular size or species of wood, or maybe before it was twelve foot, six and a half, twelve foot, things of that nature, very minor, very minor changes. Few changes on some of the fire, fire restrictions that in the, in the main building code would deal with high rises and things that we're not dealing with. So for us, no significant changes. Yes, sir?
Did it come here that it parted the water sprinkler?
It's not.
Well, it is on commercial, yes. But residential buildings now are, what we're looking at on residential, the reason we're looking at it separately is whether we want to leave residential sprinklers in it or taking them out. And that's why we're having the meeting tomorrow night, is to get some valid information on it and to, so that we can have an informed decision on what we're gonna do with that. But that's a separate issue from this one. That's why we pulled it out. We didn't want that to muddle up this, because it's two separate things. Okay? Get into our budget amendments, we have several. These all went through budget finance last hour, they were all approved and sent forward. Most of them are simply accounting items. The first one is two, twenty twenty one one oh one oh two. This is some CARES Act grant funds that came in, we have to receive them in, and we have to show, we're gonna spend them, and then just put them into the library or other equipment. Any questions about that? Twenty twenty one one oh one oh three R was twenty nine hundred and seventy dollars. This was a grant that came in last year in twenty twenty, carrying over to be able to spend it, and this is the buy some American act law for the fire department. Any questions about that? Next one is twenty twenty one one oh one oh four. This is to allocate out in the fire department budget, a line item for other salaries and wages, social security, Medicare. And our personnel policy, if we have an employee that's also working with the volunteer fire department, there'd be paid out fire department funds, since we did not have anyone like that at budget time, we did not put any money in a budget line item. We have now someone on the fire department that this would apply to, so this is putting those funds where they would be able to write a check. There again, this gets back to auditing and proper accounting, so that you're showing where these are coming from. Any questions about it? Next one's twenty twenty one one oh one oh five. There again, some CARES Act grant funds that came in to be used for the senior center, senior citizen central, boy, I say that three times. They want, this is where we're receiving that CARES Act grant funding in, and we're gonna credit the other supplies and materials, they plan to use it for some groceries and personal items for senior citizens, is what they're planning to use it for. Any questions on it? Next one, twenty twenty one one oh one oh six F B is, this is a draw out of your fund balance. This is for part-time administrative assistants in the building inspection and codes office. This position will help with paperwork scheduling and other clerical work. It is a total of eighteen thousand one hundred and ninety-four dollars. This includes the salary and wages and the social security, matching Medicare. Would be a part-time position, so there would not be any benefits at this time associated with this position. Mr. Edwards had requests, this is budget time, and because we have been cautioned by the controller's office and that not to try to take on any new personnel, at that time, because we just didn't know what was gonna happen with COVID, we didn't include it in the budget, told him that later date, we saw that the end of the year, that we came up okay, and things were looking good, that we could bring it back up again, and that's last before you name, get him a part-time person in that office. Yes, ma'am? Uh, will this be an advertised position?
Yes. Yes.
Any other questions about it? He's proposing about thirteen dollar an hour, because that's what other administrative assistants in the other offices in this same type position, that's about where they're at. That's my understanding, is that correct, Mayor?
Actually, it'll be about fifty cents less, but everybody else has been here years, and there'll be a starting fee.
I know we had some question, I think, in committee as to why that rate, that's where we came up with that rate.
It'll be the lowest paid administrative assistant in the county.
Any other questions? It will be, it will, it will pull out our fund balance, total eighteen thousand one ninety-four to do this for the, and this is for the remainder of the year. Okay? I believe that was all of our ordinances, all our budget amendments, oh, I'm sorry, we have two other budget amendments, the two that'd be added for the school system, twenty twenty one one forty one oh one. This was where they had a rebate on some unemployment, unemployment pay, that they need to show it, reflect it coming back in and going back into that line item. There again, it's an accounting procedure, it's no new fund, it's just moving it from one place to another. Also, twenty twenty one one forty one oh two, this is the John, John Sattfield Little School Roof Project. This is the bond issue, where the money's coming in from the bond issue, and allocating it to building so that they can start paying for roofing structure. Obviously, they started, if you've been by there, they've got a lot of the trusses are up, and I think they're close to start this week, or have started this week, actually putting the, the new roofing on there. So that, that is proceeding, and it's coming to the point that they need to try to spend some of their funds. That was approved by budget finance, it is one million forty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. There is a lot of contingency money in there that hopefully won't cost that, but it could cost that. That's where we're at, that's what the bond issue is for. Any questions about it? We will have those added for next Monday night as well. I think that's all of our budget amendments, we have one notary right now, Stephanie Meyer out of Tri-Metal Welding. If we have any more, we'll let you know, but right now, that's the only one we have. Mr. Y'all have any other visits to bring up? Mayor, did we cover everything? Amy, you know anything? You members of the public, you have any questions, anything you'd like to say tonight? Okay? Mr. Walsh?
Make a motion adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Martin Rick, please.
Martin Rick, don't forget, it's Thursday night, please, please, try to meet here tomorrow night at six o'clock, actually, we'll be over at courthouse, I'm sorry, at courthouse. Martin Rick, you're leading here at courthouse.